Good evening. I'd like to call to order our regular school committee meeting of May 27, 2015. Welcome to all our visitors tonight. This is always exciting when we have people visiting with us. And we would like to start with a roll call vote, and all members are present. Kim, thank you. And next, could you join us, please, in saying our pledge of allegiance? If I can get up. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item of business is the list of items for consideration. There are six items here for the consent agenda, and there are the first three. Approval of minutes, April 29, 2015, regular session. Approval of minutes, May 6, 2015, regular session. Approval, I think we'll take that to the side for a minute. And the warrants, G 413, 414, 415, R 217, 218, L 37, L 38, and L 39. Mr. Mullis, I know you weren't here for those, the two minutes, but do you mind voting for them?
Very well.
Anyway, yeah, okay. The rule is that even though you weren't here, you can still vote for minutes. And so I would entertain a motion. Yes, Mrs. Cal. Second, Mrs. Bursad, thank you. All those in favor, unanimous, Kim. So that would be A, B, and D. Warrant, payroll warrants for 5, 6, 2015, 5, 20, 2015. Mrs. Bonish.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? That would be five, Kim, with two abstains, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. And the third set of warrants is FS 13, 14, and 15. Oh, Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
Okay, and I can see you now. I saw your hand. Mr. Bjork, all those in favor? Six yes, one abstain, Mrs. Carroll. And I put the WEF Technology Grant donation aside because it's a very nice donation, and the superintendent would probably be able to.
Yes, I'd be happy to cover that. So I know Robert was planning to attend, but I know he was also trying to be in three places at once this evening. So we would like to express our sincere appreciation to the Wilmington Education. Here he is, right on cue. You're right on time. We'd like to express our sincere appreciation to the Wilmington Educational Foundation for their very generous donation of $7,237 that is going to fund a number of technology grants that are in your packet. You can see all the different, all the different grants that are being awarded. So these will have a significant impact on instruction in our district, and we are really excited, as are the teachers, to implement these various grants and purchase these items and implement them in the classroom for next year. So, Robert, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, but we are welcome.
Great. Well, no, I just wanted to echo what you'd said. I wanted to thank the Technology Grant Subcommittee, besides myself. It was Dan Ardito and John Romano. And especially wanted to thank Neil Ellis, who really did a wonderful job of helping us go through all the applications. And, you know, it was our pleasure to fund $7,500 approximately worth of technology. And the number of grants we funded was actually a record. So we're very pleased, and we hope we can do it again next year.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much, Robert. Appreciate it. All right. So I would accept the Wilmington Educational Foundation donation, a motion to accept the donation provided in the form of technology grants in the amount of $7,237. Mrs. Burns, so moved. Second, Mr. Bjork. All those in favor, unanimous. Thank you very much. Excellent. Our next item of business is our last evening with our student representatives for the school committee. Good evening, Emma and Stephen.
So tomorrow, May 28, is the opening night for the Lamp Lighters production of Hamlet. The show starts at 7:00 PM and will be put on Friday and Saturday night as well.
The Class of 2015 Senior Banquet will be held on Tuesday, June 2, at 5:00 PM in the high school cafeteria.
Graduation rehearsal for the senior class will be held on Thursday, June 4, in the WHS gymnasium.
The scholarship night for the Class of 2015 is scheduled for Friday, June 5, at 6:30 in the gymnasium.
And finally, graduation ceremonies will be held on Sunday, June 7, in the WHS gym at 2:00 PM.
Excellent, thank you. Now, not to put you on the spot, but since I know it's okay, I know what you're doing, would you like to tell people what you're going to be doing next year? Start with Emma.
Okay. I will be attending the University of Rhode Island to study nursing.
And I'll be attending Emmanuel College to study biology.
Mrs. Kane's alma mater. I'm very excited for that. So we are, give you a clap. Thank you so much. And Mrs. Bonish is going to present you with some, just a little gift from the school committee. We're very pleased with how things went this year. We're so glad to have you, keep the news of the community, to the community, and we're very, very happy. Thank you so much.
Okay, so this is a certificate in appreciation, WHS 2015, for your service and dedication as a student representative to the Wilmington School Committee for the 2015, 2014, 2015 school year. And we thank you from all of us, both of you.
Years ago, under the No Child Left Behind Act, this was, it was added to school committees that you could have student representatives, and it was encouraged. And actually, many school committees at first did not. We started it right away, and we've had so many wonderful young people over the course of the time that has been instituted, being our community representatives. And I think it keeps a good connection between the community, the school committee, and basically the high school. So, and we have, every time, we've had a wonderful child. I shouldn't even call you child, young man and young lady. They've been wonderful, so, and there's no less this year. So we really appreciate everything you've done for us. And as we always say, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Thank you.
And your parents or whoever see you don't, but we're glad to have you.
Yes, I guess I would just like to echo the sentiment that, you know, you could not have chosen, we couldn't have chosen two final representatives. These two students you see everywhere in Wilmington High School. They're so involved in so many things, from community service to extracurriculars. And for me, as a new superintendent, it's been nice to be able to walk through the halls of Wilmington High School and know and connect with students. You've always been so gracious and welcoming, so I thank you for your time and your service and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, well, thank you so much. Okay. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
Yes, I would like to actually begin with, because there's so many guests here for this particular item on the superintendent's report. We're happy to have several guests here this evening who are here because they participated in the Massachusetts Mathematical Olympiads for elementary and middle schools. Our intermediate school teams, we have one from the West and one from the North, they actually competed not only against fourth and fifth graders, but against fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. The North team actually, we have a trophy, I believe, that they took home for third place overall. And we actually have students from both schools who scored not only in the top 50, 40, 25, 20 percent, but we actually have two students, one from each school, who scored in the top 2 percent despite their competing against fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students. So I think we have with us today, yes, they're here, okay, is Mrs. Appolito and Ms. McMenamin, who, do you want to introduce the students that are here?
Do you like to join us up here and tell us about their accomplishments?
We also have with us Mrs. Tanner from the North as well, who was one of the advisors to the Math Olympia team.
Thank you for having us for our tomorrow. Good very special to be here tonight. We have several students who competed. I'm just going to list all the students from both teams. So we had, from the North, we had Mara Ferenza, Marissa Galozzi, Anay, oh yeah, could you stand up when I call your name? Thank you. Anay Gandhi, Emily Gray, and Lilian Nguyen.
Lilian's not here.
Lilian's not here. Okay. And these students were on the team that placed in third overall out of 25 teams from Middlesex County. So we're very, we're proud of all of our students.
I think it's important, sorry to interrupt, to give credit to Ms. Tanner and Mrs. Reynolds, who were the Math Olympia coaches all year long and prepared the students by working on problem solving and getting their readiness for competition. And so they met on a pretty regularly basis throughout the year, and they're having their end-of-year celebration coming up, I believe, on June 2. And you can see that they're proudly wearing their medals today from their third-place finish. And it was just a very exciting morning, that Saturday morning, where everybody was coming together to focus on academics and mathematics, and we were pretty proud to be there.
Very proud. And this was the first time that Wilmington was represented at this tournament, so felt very proud.
All right.
We also had the team from the West, and those students were Gia Kumar, Cameron Eich, Olivia, I should be able to pronounce this because it's Italian, Bazuko.
Yep, very good.
Angelin Champa, and Shrikar Mala Jalosia. And this team was coached during the school year by Mrs. Jennifer Yelnik and Mrs. Robin Barry. And during the competition, I also want to make note that Mrs. Sally Lojak and I proctored for this team. So we're very proud of all of our students, and we're hoping to do it again next year.
Excellent. That's wonderful.
Yes. Thank you so much to both of you and to your staffs who advised the teams. This is impressive accomplishment, and we're happy that you came to celebrate with us. And to the students, nice job.
Great job.
Keep at it.
Thank you. They're looking like they're excited. So nice to have academic success like that. That's wonderful. And everybody working together, that's the results now of everybody working together.
Let me put that part, did you drop one more little thing?
Please.
We sat at one long table, we had the North team and the West team, and a lot of these kids don't really know each other that well.
Right.
But during the competition, they were sharing with each other, because we went over the questions and what the possible answers were, and they, the whole district, they worked as a team, both the North and the West. And that, for me, was what made me the proudest of them. So, great job. We have great kids here in Wilmington.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Appolito.
Thank you.
The other items I just wanted to report on, and Emma and Steve did a great job of running through the events that are coming up, but just a couple, even beyond graduation, is again, June 11, Underclassmen Award Ceremony at the Wilmington High School at 6:30 PM. And of course, and these guys are really happy to hear this, June 18, the last day of school for K-8 with early dismissal, you can clap. June 19, last day of school for grades nine through 12, early dismissal. The other item I wanted to bring to your attention is actually, you may have begun to hear about this, we were just recently notified through our athletic director, Ed Harrison, that the Rotundo Enterprises, that is the, that runs the Resto Share rink, has informed us that they will not be extending a rental agreement to Wilmington Public Schools for the upcoming season. There was no apparent reason provided, and we certainly are continuing to engage in conversations with them. And Mr. Harrison is working hard to secure ice time from rinks in neighboring communities. So we will continue to try to have conversations, but at the same time, approach this by locating ice rinks in other communities that we might be able to secure for purposes of our boys and girls hockey teams for the 2015, '16 season. And, sorry, that's a clue on a down.
It's so difficult when you don't know all the circumstances, so we'll withhold judgment for now. But we certainly, our children deserve to be able to go to the ice rink in their town. And we certainly, that would be, I would believe that the school committee's thoughts on this, the original thought is, we have the right to have our children at that rink. So hopefully, things will work out there, and we'll keep you informed of what's happening. Oh dear. Okay, old business. There is no old business for this evening. Under new business, we'll have the Safety Committee presentation.
And so we welcome this evening, Mr. Rogiro, who's here for all our meetings, but also Mr. Straznik. I want to personally thank Jeff and Paul for stepping up to take on the leadership role for the District Safety Committee this year. They have done a fantastic job, as they'll report out to you on their accomplishments. And, you know, one thing that we were really excited about this year, and I'm sure they're going to include that in their presentation, is the fact that this safe, District Safety Committee includes representatives from every single building, and those individuals are actually paid a stipend, and as part of their role, they are a liaison back to their school-based safety committees. So that is a structure that I think is very effective in being able to make sure that the work of the Safety Committee is not only representing, representing all buildings, but is effectively communicated to, back to buildings and building staff. So I think that Jeff is going to take the lead here.
I was a little tickled. So I'll do all the speaking.
Can I see? Yeah, they can. It's actually talking to them.
So we've actually done a lot this year, and I'd like to share with you the, what I would consider accomplishments of the District Safety Committee. Just to kind of start off with, the goals that we set up before we really even began this year was, you know, we wanted to increase the number of representatives we had on the team. You know, we had obviously the superintendent, assistant superintendent, Mr. Rogirio, myself, some other administrators, but we wanted to include more people, teachers, and not just teachers, but other staffs in the building, because everybody, you know, we talk about school safety, that means everybody. So that was something we set a goal for as far as doing. Also, each building kind of had their own way of doing their own school safety teams, so we wanted to kind of bring that together and make that more uniform, have similar discussions, and use those in a different way. Also, looking at the past safety plan, the District Safety Plan, we wanted to make sure that that was updated, and we also wanted to create a kind of review schedule so that it's frequently updated, because things change all the time. So those were the goals that we set at the beginning of the year. So again, previously, you know, we had some representation, you know, from the different buildings, different, you know, from central office. We have always had, which I've been, was impressed with when I first came to Wilmington, was our relationship with the police and fire departments. So they were very, obviously, active in this. Building safe, the building-based safety teams were, again, weren't kind of uniform, people were using them in different ways, we wanted to look at that. And also, of course, you know, recently, we've really been focusing on the ALICE protocol, so we wanted to kind of still keep that there, but also, we know that there's other things going on, you know, not just, you know, not just looking at intruders, but there's tons of other kind of, you know, hazards and incidents that we wanted to make sure that we, we were on top of. And then again, we did have a safety plan, but it was, it was outdated, it hadn't been reviewed for a while, so we wanted to make sure that we focused on that. So now, we do have representatives from each building, including the Roman House, very diversified group. We have secretaries, nurses, teachers, administrative assistants, like I said, we have, you know, I feel like we have a very well-rounded group, and it's been, it's been great to hear people talk about their roles in their buildings and how that plays into school safety. And like the superintendent said, we have representation from every grade level, maybe not every grade, but, you know, we have early childhood, elementary, middle, high school, which is great. We've been working very hard, this has been our big plan for this year, is to get a good working draft of, of a safety plan put into place, and I'll talk a little bit more about what we've been doing with that. And the building-based teams have been meeting regularly every month, which has been great, because what we've been doing is having discussions at our district team, and then those representatives go back to the school teams and kind of talk about what we've been discussing, and then they bring back to our group, you know, information there. So it's been very, very fluid, and it's been working out really well. Not going to go through all the members, but these are all the people who have been part of this group all year. I can't say enough about how professional they've all been, how dedicated. We've had, say, every single meeting we had has been very productive, there hasn't been any wasted time. You know, they've been great about going back to their buildings, taking information back, working on different things, and then bringing it back to our groups. This has been, you know, again, I can't say enough about how great all these people worked, and not just in their teams, but worked together. Like, we have people from all different backgrounds and buildings, and it just seemed like, you know, it was a great, great fit for everyone. So, yep.
One thing I could add, as we've worked in teams, especially during our meetings, we made sure that all the police didn't stay together, all the firefighters, so forth. We made a conscious effort to spread everyone out, so each team knows working on one of these threats or hazards that Jeff's going to talk about, had representation from all from public safety as well as within the schools, stuff that people wanted to do.
Yep. It's funny how the police tend to kind of just gravitate right towards each other, and we have to split them up. They're okay with that, they're good sports. So, kind of the, pretty much the bulk of the year was focused on looking at different hazards, threats, and incidents. One of the things that, excuse me, that I got when I went to a workshop, was a school safety and security program that was presented to Governor Patrick. And in that, it talks about different hazards, threats, and incidents, but it breaks it down by different categories, so how to prevent something, how to prepare for something, respond, you know, in the middle of it, and then recover, what do we do after the incident? So that's really how we focused our discussions in our work. We created a template so that the teams could go back to their schools and actually fill out the template, and then bring it back, and then we kind of look at it together. So we were actually able to get a really solid working draft of 27 different hazard threats and incidents, which was great. I, you know, was hoping for half of that, but the teams worked so, again, well together that we were able to get through some of these pretty quickly. And then, so again, what we're going to do, so we have basically one more meeting left, and what we're going to talk about is how this year went, any changes for next year, and then, you know, put those into place for next year.
Just to give you an idea of what some of these hazardous threats that were identified, bomb threats, a missing child, no heat in the building, weather issue, weapons, things like that, so there were 20 different, 27 different threats. And then with, for each one of those, we built or in the process of building action plan and so forth.
So what we're also going to do too is look at those, and then think about, you know, we don't want to give all that to the staff. I think that is, all that information is too much. So we're going to, we're going to take, and we're going to create like an operations manual for the district, so this is something like would have at the, at the Roman House or administrators would have. And then kind of take the bits and pieces from that that we feel like, you know, the staff needs, that the teachers need, you know, kind of in the classrooms and in the schools, so that they're not completely overwhelmed. For example, there's things that they don't necessarily need to know about, if we're talking about media staging. Like, teachers don't need to know about that, they just need to know about how to respond to an incident and things like that. So we're going to, that's something that we're going to talk about next, probably throughout the next year, of how to now take all that information and kind of put it together. And one of the nice things that we've been able to do is we've been able to get a finished copy from Malden Public Schools. So they were very generous, very trusting, because a lot of that is confidential information. And so we've been able to, kind of, I'd say halfway through the year, use what, kind of what they did to help guide us, so we're not kind of creating everything from scratch. And we were able to kind of look at what they have, what we have, what matches up. There are certain things that they have that, in Wilmington, we don't necessarily need to worry about, so we could take those things out. Then there were things that they had that we hadn't thought about yet, so it was really good to kind of take a look at, take a look at what they had. The other thing we're going to do as far as next steps is talk about a kind of review cycle, so how often are we going to review this plan, making sure that it is up to date, and how do we actually update it? Do we send out, you know, new copies to people? But, you know, so those are all things that we're going to be discussing. Obviously, when we publish this, is to present it to the staff, go over it with the staff to make sure that they're comfortable with it, they kind of know their roles. And that's pretty much our plan for next year. I think our goal for next year would be, by the, by this time next year, is to have that plan in place. So we have, like I said, we have a very good working draft now. We still need to do some revisions, we still need to do some edits, there's still things that we're not clear about, that we still have to find information. But hopefully, by this time next year, we'll be able to be able to present an actual operations manual and, you know, maybe something like a flip chart that we use for the staff. So that's kind of where we are right now. Any questions?
This is Bruce. Are you planning with regards to once you have a solid, have it in a finished form, planning on any kind of exercises or practice with the staff? I mean, you don't want to, you know, give students any additional anxiety behind it, but I think the, you know, practicing it would be, I think, instrumental, God forbid, if any of the more serious, serier threats were to occur. The other aspect is, and I may be, sorry to ask you a few questions at once.
That's all.
I just thought I'd get it out before everybody, is I know that Wilmington has had an evacuation plan that has really never been exercised, per se, and I didn't know if the committee would perhaps also look towards that, probably in a, you know, with a town-wide situation in practicing that piece. I know some other communities do do that.
I can speak a little bit to that. We are in the process of doing a town-wide, they're calling it a tabletop, exercise, where we, we have identified a threat to the community or something happening to the community that impacts town hall, school administration, schools, senior citizens, residents, and so forth. And included in that exercise, which will be in a couple of weeks, will be not necessarily doing these things, but, okay, we have to evacuate a school, so this, these are the steps we need to follow and so forth. So from a town perspective, or there's trees down everywhere, and buses can't get to a certain school, and so the DPW is involved, so it's all-town departments, as well as the schools are involved in this town-wide, not an evacuation plan, but an emergency plan. So we're in the process of developing that. The Fire Department actually got a grant, and we have a gentleman, retired fire chief from Lowell, that's kind of leading us on that.
Okay.
One of the other things, one of the other things too, that we've also been talking about is utilizing the community more, so not just making it, you know, we're evacuating, we're doing this and that, but creating almost like a contact list. So if we, you know, for example, we need to evacuate and, or we need to shelter in place, and we're going to need water, we're going to need food, so who can we reach out, you know, in the community to do that? So to have those kind of connections too. But also looking at, you know, I've looked at our, everybody's evacuation plan, and a lot of them are kind of, we evacuate to this school, we evacuate to this school, what happens if we can't evacuate to any school? What if we evacuate out, you know? So, I mean, we're always going to be looking at, you know, updating those things. So, I mean, we're always going to be looking at, you know, updating those things and making sure that it's, you know, that it's, it's doable.
It's just, I guess, the execution of, of that plan, and just being familiar so that it's not second knowledge, that it becomes almost instinctive in that piece. I was just, you know, curious.
I think it also depends too on which, you know, for example, if there's an intruder in the building, we can practice that, you know, if there's a fire in the building, we can practice that. You know, there's certain things, like if there's, you know, we talk about if there's a medical issue with either a staff or a student, you know, that might not be something we practice, but it's something we discuss and go over. You know, we've also talked about, you know, if a pipe bursts in the building, we want to know where, you know, if custodians aren't available, we want to know where the shut-off is, you know, so taking walks around the building. So there's different, I guess it depends on which one we're talking about as far as, you know, practicing and executing.
I think from, if it helps, makes it clear, thinking of the higher-level threats, which I'm, I think you probably can understand where, what I consider in that realm. I think that's where my concern is when, when it's split decisions and it's, you know, instinct, and whether it's done just once a year, you know, whether before school starts with volunteers, high school students, you know, who are willing to participate. I, I just think practice makes perfect and, you know, in the, you know, certain situations and I, just so that you run through, it's a run-through, you know.
Yeah. I mean, I can tell you what the analysts chose, I mean, we, we're, you know, we just did our, our second round, and I know some schools are getting ready to do their second round, and just from when we started, we've already learned a lot. You know, we're having conversations about, you know, what if this happens, what if that happens, and, you know, we're doing different scenarios, where this time, I know, Woburn Street, we didn't, we told the staff what day, we didn't tell them what time, or in the past, we've done that. Now they're saying, well, don't even tell us what day it is, just do it, now they want us to do it at lunch, because it's so, the staff is getting more comfortable with it, so they're actually kind of, you know, raising the bar a little bit too, which is great, so that we can practice these different, you know, it's not just, okay, everybody's in their classroom and we're going to practice these, but, you know, let's, let's pretend there's an intruder, you know, so, so I guess the, the staff is ready for that.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions? I'm just curious as to, out of the 27 items, have we had to deal with any of them specifically in the last couple of years?
We've actually had to deal with some of them more recently.
It was all part of the initiation, which was...
So one or two was just...
Well, I mean, I think there's probably...
Should we add?
Some of them, oh, you want to add a few more? I mean, some of that, I mean, we've, we have had to deal with, with bomb threats and that type of issue, we've had to deal with plenty of snow, I don't know, I mean, we've had some no heat issues, so I, I think we've had to deal with, with some of these, and they run the gamut, I think, from the, the less serious to, you know, obviously bomb threat and...
So while, while that's happening, did you, as much as you had done, were you able to apply some of the principles that you were working on?
It depends, I mean, not me, per se, because I didn't have to deal with the bomb threat, but I, you know, an example of, you know, I don't want to get too detailed, but, you know, we had a student who suddenly lost a parent, and that's something that we did talk about, but we didn't have a plan set in place, but the conversation, based on the conversations that we've had, that kind of, you know, clicked in, and, you know, first off, we, one of the things that we, we had talked about in these meetings, that I thought about was, does this child have a sibling in another building, that we need to make sure that that staff knows that this happened? So there are different, you know, even though these are working drafts, there's, there's definitely things that, that we, you know, thought about based on our conversations.
Right. I think it does, it, there's an investment made here because we are paying a stipend to many of the folks who are coming after the school day ends to give of their time, but I think it's a really great investment because this is not, as, as Jeff and Paul both mentioned, this is not something that just, you, it stops at one point in time. And so having this committee in place, meeting on a regular basis every year, allows us to learn from the opportunities as they arise, because while we might not have had to deal with, for example, our carbon monoxide issue this year, that's probably on the list for next year. You know, we learn from those things as they evolve, and then we can, and this, this committee is in place specifically to address and tweak the protocols that we have to address them.
That's really interesting, the people you have on the committee, and I think you do have a very interesting and wide variety of people on the committee, and H has a little expertise in different areas, I would think, it seems to be, so good. Anyhow, thank you very much, we appreciate that update. Oh, yeah, he thinks he can. No problem. Okay, our next item of business, oh, yep, we are going to have our CPAC presentation with Mary Ann Donovan and Joe Newhouse, please join us, ladies.
Just to mention that Mary Hood is also here this evening, as well, joining them.
Mary, did you want to sit up here too with one, take another drink? No, okay. Thank you, ladies, for taking your time to come, and I, I just have to say before they start, this is the most impressive group. They, I really, the concern and the care and the dedication and the way they work together, and even having Ms. Hood there, Mrs. Hood there, is so special because that's not always the way, and the communication there is just excellent, and I wish that people in the school system would take more advantage of this particular group, and so anything that you want to share with us and we want to help you with, we'll do it.
Thank you, and we feel the same way about you, as you attend most of our meetings as well. We can't thank you enough for coming and supporting our, our efforts. So, we thought we would start with a little background. What is, what is the CPAC? The Massachusetts Special Education Law requires a school district to establish a special education parent advisory council. Basically, we are a subcommittee of the school committee. We're authorized to meet with designated school officials, to engage in activities which enable the PAC to participate in planning, development, evaluation of a district's special education programs.
And so, our CPAC, we currently have five members, and of those five members, they also serve on other committees that you guys have asked us to, and one of them being the School Climate and Culture Committee, and the other one right now is the Health and Wellness Committee. We've done other committees in the past, but those are the only two that we have active members attending meetings at this point. One of the other things that we've been working on this year is revitalizing the parents' support group. Probably about five years ago, we had one that had been working and we disbanded. We have been working hard at revitalizing that because that is one of the main issues that kept coming across us, is that parents were just looking for more and more support. So right now, about two months ago, we started having two different meetings, we're running a morning meeting for parents who can't get out at night once their kids are home, and then we also have an evening meeting, and so far, they've been very well-attended. It's been a breath of fresh air, parents, especially the morning group, parents who just can't get out because, you know, they have their special needs kids home after school, and so they're able to get out in the morning and offer their help that way and, you know, make connections. We're going to be looking to keep building this and offer different, you know, speakers and whatnot in the coming year. We've got one more, or two more meetings set up before the end of the school year, and we're going to take a break over the summer and see how that goes.
One of the other things that we've been working on this year is our parent survey. We owe big thanks to Nancy Harrington for helping us get that up on Survey Monkey. One thing that I think most parents in the district are going to need to become more accustomed to is surveys. You know, data collection is going to involve them as well, and they're going to get multiple kinds of surveys under the same, under the same headline to try and get as much information as possible. Unfortunately, we had only 30 parents respond to the survey, which really makes it, at this point, we're going to have to carry this over to next year, and put it up again and really kind of get that out to them, get parents more accustomed to seeing surveys, taking them, getting their input across kind of all levels. So that, that one was a little disappointing, but, you know, next year, we'll put it up there. If we had every parent who attended one of our workshops complete the survey, it would have pushed us to our 75% to make it statistically significant. So that's something that we're going to keep working on. Again, this year, we have our Mass PAC membership, which is a Federation for Children for Special Needs Project, which provides support for parents and professionals. We did multiple parent workshops, and again, board members attended the Federation yearly conference and have participated in some of their leadership workshop for PACs. Current board members would be myself, Mary Ann Donovan, Martha O'Brien, Joe Newhouse, Kate O'Malley, Melissa McDonald, and Christine Nally. They are our two new board members for this year. Additionally, as Mrs. Kane had mentioned at all of our board meetings, and we can't thank her enough for giving up her, her time for us and her time, you know, away from her family, Mary Hood, Administrator of Special Education, and Mrs. Kane for coming and providing all of, you know, leadership, you know, to us.
This year, we were able to run five different workshops for parents and Wilmington staff. This year, we had great turnout at all of our workshops, and one of the, couple of things I think came into play here, we changed the nights from Thursday night to Monday nights, for some reason, it seemed like Monday nights worked better for a lot of parents. And then the other item was, I think, communication was much better this year, and I got to thank Mary Hood for helping us get the information out to school principals, who were then able to get the information out to parents. So we had great parent turnout this year, and at many of them, we had great staff turnout, which was nice. The first workshop we ran, which we're required to run every year by, with our CPAC membership, is the Basic Rights in the Federation for Children with Special Needs, come, send a representative, and they come out and do that, and that's a workshop that we run every year, so parents know what their basic rights are as a special needs parent.
Our next set, we found past couple of years, we've been having a season, we do heavy in the, right in the beginning of the year, and heavy right at, right at the end of the year, so we didn't have to cancel too many for snow, thank heavens, but it was tricky. We did two transition workshops, one was presented by Class, and they're an organization here in Wilmington, and it was everything you're going to need to know if a student is going to require some additional assistance. Are they able to make, you know, financial decisions on their own? If they're not, what's your step, what, what's your process, who's out there to, to help you? The next one, our board was so fortunate to have a presentation by Kristin Spinosa, who's a Wilmington High School Special Education teacher. Please remember her name. She's going for her transition endorsement and really attached some friendly vocabulary to this whole process of transition. You know, we talk about transition planning forums, well, she, when she was talking to our board, she says, okay, we like to think of this now as a graphic organizer, what do we need to do, how do we need to get there? All of that brings everything to a reality for a parent, and you're more collaborative. Oh, what about this? Oh, I forgot about this. Oh, driver's license, does that need to go down there? So when you're using terms like that, and a parent, depending on their child's disability, it gives you a place on where you need to go. Transition is a big topic in special education for the past, you know, two, three years, and more and more is coming out regarding transition. Wilmington is fortunate that we're really, in my opinion, ahead of the game in transition as far as getting people trained in it, understanding what the conversations need, need to look like. We had our Anxiety Workshop, which was a panel discussion, again, by Wilmington staff members. We had Bree Milton, Melissa Belliano, and they are school psychologists here in Wilmington, Amanda Scott, who was the high school social worker. Our last one was Dyslexia, presented by the Mass Branch of the Dyslexia Association. Both of these topics were really workshops are topic-specific, and that really helped draw our parents out, instead of one that was pretty broad, that hit everybody, one that they could really attach a need to, for themselves tended to bring, bring the crowds out. And lastly, CPAC, we'd like to thank, thank the Wilmington Public School, the administration and the staff, for all of their collaborative efforts. The women at Mrs. Hood's office, Peggy Fuller and Lynn Neville, oh, I said that wrong, Lynn Neville, Peggy Fuller, Kathy Fuller, they've been wonderful with, you know, with the snow and trying to get everything scheduled, all of our printings, we can't thank them enough. Nancy Harrington, the Roman House, of course, Mary Delai, Superintendent, Dr. Kate Burnham, the Assistant Superintendent, and Mary Hood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Mrs. Brown? Oh, Miss...
It's okay, go ahead.
You have to be fast on that buzzer, Steve. I had just a question, pertaining to this survey, was that just for students within district, or is it for all parents in the...
No, this one was just in, just in district, and that was, again, that was an issue. We had people from out of district take the survey.
Okay. The other aspect too, as a parent, I don't always get the notices of the workshops coming up or the, the meetings, just a...
We're working on it.
Oh, okay, no worries, no worries.
And that was something that, you know, Mrs. Hood and, and the board really tried to keep track of, okay, yep, we, we watched them go out, did they get this group, to make sure that they're, that they are going out.
Thank you. And, and lastly, as you know, at the federal level right now, the No Child Left Behind is being revamped, and I'm monitoring it for the work, but if there's anything that, and I speak through the superintendent, do the staff, either yourself or in, in your collaborative meetings pertaining to what's coming down the pipeline, that I may offer my service, services in speaking to the powers that be for what it's worth and lending voice to it, please...
Which is, which is, thank you, which is extremely posi- positive, and, and people should feel comfortable doing that, but one thing that, you know, all of the Federation workshops and all of CPAC pieces, we try and get parents comfortable with going to their, their representatives, like, here's the email, here's their names, you need to put this in your phone, and when these things are coming up, voice your, voice your opinion.
I, I have been told by those that I've been in contact, that they do very much appreciate that reach-out, because otherwise, they have no idea, and a lot of times, it's not something they're very familiar with, and, and I think special education is this whole different entity of, besides school districts, it's a whole sub-separate animal, for lack of a better description, you know, with regards to the knowledge and the diversity of what it's all about and what it encompasses.
And parents in general, and especially special education parents, they have a lot to take on, so unfortunately, sometimes things have come in past and it was, oh, I didn't know that was coming down the pike, so having that resource available is really helpful. So, thank you.
You touched on one of the things, the notifications, I was curious about that, because I'd heard about the basic rights, I hadn't heard about some of the other ones, so that's good to hear. I was just curious about the composition of your board, how do, how do you become, how does one become a board member? Is it appointment or...
No, no, it's...
Any special parent can actually become a board member. Unfortunately, we don't get a lot of attendance at our board meetings, so anybody is welcome. They are, our meetings are posted, and we try to send out emails when we can to remind people to try to get people, and then we have election at the end of the year for the co-chairs, the co-secretaries, and the treasurer, and then there's also member-at-large positions available as well.
Right, so any parent who's receiving special education service with, within the district, they are a member. If you want to work on the board or serve on the board, it's by election.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanna embarrass her for a second and just once again thank Jo and, and Mike Newhouse for their very generous donation earlier this year that sent, I think it was twenty of our staff, twenty-two of our staff, that attended the Federation Annual Conference in Boston. And, you know, we had the opportunity to debrief a little bit, and everybody really had some opportunities, Jeff and I included. We happened to follow each other around all day. I'm not quite sure how that happened. And it sends really great professional development sessions, which were, really got some people excited about future goals and future directions. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. I'm glad so many teachers were able to take advantage of it, and it was a great day and a lot of great information that's hopefully brought back to the district.
I think also, the more I learn from your meetings, the more I feel that it's just not special ed teachers or special ed parents who need this information. It's everyone. The, the information that you're providing has been so wonderful for, for helping people make, understand things. And I, I think the more that we can get, not just the special ed parents, but others at some of these workshops, I think the more, the better we'll be as we move along.
You're right, and especially with Common Core coming down the line, a lot of those strategies that, you know, we've been saying would, a special ed student would require. Now, it's, you're going to see it across, across the board, you know? Math notes are always gonna be out now, from now on when they're doing math. Our Anxiety Workshop, if someone's uptight, you know, what's kind of going on? That really is across the board.
Absolutely. So I think you, you provide a wonderful service for the school department, and I'm glad that you're an offshoot of the school committee. Very good.
And anything?
As far as professional development goes, that, you know, you're looking for, we're, we're happy to help.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I thought that was very nice. All right, our next item of business is the lunch price increase.
Yes, we'll turn this one right over to Mr. Ruggiero to give you an update. You do have a memo in your packet though that explains some of the background that came, a memo from, from the Director of School Nutrition, Mary Palin.
Thank you. This is maybe the third year that we've come to you with a slight increase in the price, the cost of the price of lunches. Back in two thousand and eleven, if you participate in the National School Lunch Program, you have to, lunch prices have to be closer to a two dollar and seventy cent price, which is the difference between the free federal reimbursement and the, and the federal reimbursement for paid lunch, lunches. So we're asking for a ten cent increase on lunches, which would bring our elementary schools from two thirty to two forty for a lunch, and our high school and middle school from two fifty-five to two seventy-five to two sixty-five, two eighty-five. As you can see, but I think we also included a document that kind of shows some surrounding communities and the price of lunch. Even with this increase, we're, we're lower than I think almost every community except maybe one, one or two. So this inches us closer to the beginning requirement, and we have some time to get there.
As, as we look at this chart, are we one of the few communities that don't provide breakfast?
Yeah, we've actually started that program in the high school, I think, just recently. Mary Cian, I think at one point, we had tried it, and it was really, the participation was such that it just didn't work. So she has tried it recently to see how it, you know, what the participation would be like at the high school level. So once she gets more information on that and we finish the year, she can see if she can roll it out.
I can see why, though, sometimes, especially in middle school, we haven't gotten up to high school yet, but it's early, they're early, and they're trying to get there, and it's hard to get there. I can't imagine them having time to have breakfast.
Right, that's the other thing.
I have a question about this.
Yes.
What exactly is a premium lunch?
That's a school committee lunch.
Oh, I have not, I have nothing to form.
Chips and water.
Do it.
Yeah, I, I can get you that information.
It's all right.
No, that's, that's fine. Yeah.
Makes us look good here.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question, you know, similar to your question with breakfast. How does that work? And so you have to get there early in order to buy a breakfast at other schools, is that?
Yeah, I think there's occasions where students may show up early to school, and there's an opportunity to have breakfast, you know, before their first class, before homeroom or what have you, so it's.
Like a hot breakfast that's served?
Um, I don't know if, I don't think it's necessarily hot. I mean, cereal and milk.
I was just wondering.
Breakfast program at their respective schools, and I have to say, it's, it's great because they're able to unwind from their, the transportation to those schools, but it also allows them an opportunity to, for social skills and just be able to talk to others and get ready for that day. And it really is benefit. And I, the cares, the before-school care program offer, do you know if it offers anything or is that?
It's snacks, I think.
Yes.
Snacks.
Great, thank you.
I think we're fortunate that we're a community that doesn't need to provide lunches, because I worked in one that did need to, and there were hundreds of kids or more that needed to have that breakfast provided for them. Yeah, so, so if there's no more questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the lunch price increase for the two fifteen, two sixteen school year. Mrs. Burns?
Still moved.
Second, Mrs. Brasad, others in favor? Unanimous, Kim, thank you.
I have to.
Oh, and one abstention, sorry, one abstention, Mrs. Carroll. So six to one, okay. Thank you. Our next item would be the copy paper bid.
And we'll turn that over to Mr. Ruggiero.
Thank you. We went, went out to bid for copy paper needs. We had four companies submitted bid proposals and samples. And lowest bidder was WB Mason. Their price was about a one point two percent increase over this current fiscal year. They also have the contract this year, so we'd like to award the paper bid to WB Mason for the fifteen, sixteen school year.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve that WB Mason Company be awarded the copy paper bid for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Mrs. Carroll?
Still moved.
Second, Mrs. Brasad, others in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Thank you. Boy, Mr. Ruggiero's working tonight.
Yes, he is.
Okay, our next item of business is disposal of surplus materials.
Oh, Mrs. Ippolito stayed in case of questions. Yes. Again, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Paul kick us off, and if you have any questions, Mrs. Ippolito is here as well, as is Dr. Burnham, who probably can speak to math trailblazers as well.
Thank you. Back, probably a couple of months ago, Mrs. Ippolito, it was wondering how do we dispose of some surplus materials that we just don't use or anything? So we had a discussion, and I think she went around looking to see who would take donations. And she was able to donate some of the books, I believe, to certain organizations, and there's another set that's surplus that she could not donate. So we're just requesting the school committee to dispose of those since we can't, we couldn't give them to anyone to donate. So you can correct me if I said anything wrong.
I remember when we had to have these books. There's a part of me that just can't believe that now we have to find a way to dispose of them. It's, that's what happens, and things keep changing. It's incredible, Mrs. Burns?
I have to concur with, with you and your statement, and I, I, when you mean dispose, you mean to throw them out with the bathwater, so to speak, or? Okay, because this, have you looked into, there's two different organizations I looked into that will take textbooks, depending on the year of print. And I know that they're charitable organizations. One is Books for Africa, and the other one is Better World Books. Has that been explored?
It has. The shipping costs to send the supplies are being thousands of dollars. So I looked at four different, four different organizations, from charity organizations to other private schools. And then we finally had Fall It come in, and the, the books are obsolete, their, their copyright date is not aligned with the curriculum standards, so it's not completely obsolete, unfortunately.
What's, do you, what's the copyright date on those?
Two thousand eight.
Okay, because I know Books for Africa and Better World Books, that does fall within their copyrighted requirements to take Texas, textbooks. And I, I, I just hate to see if it could be used somewhere else in literacy in the world, not to get on my soapbox, but if, you know, you know, I know that, I think Better World Books is located in Georgia, so I didn't, you know, with regards to the number of, exactly what that estimate can look, because it can be anywhere from two hundred, depending upon the amount, you know, and weight, two hundred to, you know, for what you said. And I just didn't know what that would look like with the number of books that you have still in surplus.
So my niece actually started a library in Africa.
Yeah, oh, wow.
And so I was hoping that that would be our avenue to ship them there, but it would literally be thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to ship the amount of materials that we have to Africa.
Thank you, I appreciate you taking that due diligence.
I try, I try really hard, because it's sort of, like you, I don't like to see things just kind of disposed of, but there really isn't any other avenue.
It's continued to be a challenge, even for things like furniture and equipment that we'd like to donate, and that's oftentimes the stumbling block, is we have to pay to ship them there, so.
I know that.
We wish you could just beam them over there, unfortunately, yeah.
And then you wonder if they're still publishing these books. Oh, this one not. Wow, that's very interesting.
But I know those countries, they're so desperate for textbooks, even perhaps what they, you know, this would be newer, a newer version of what they have, but, but I appreciate you looking into it. Thank you.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve the disposal of the surplus materials. Mr. Burns?
Uh, for that motion.
Here, the second, Mr. Mullis. Others in favor? Unanimous. Seth, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep, one more thing.
Oh, we have. Oh, good. Oh, good. Sorry, I'm so, I didn't realize.
We'd like to invite you to the Fourth Annual STEM Fair. So invitations are coming around, and that is on June fourth from six to eight. And we're very excited again this year. We have a lot of outside vendors joining us, a couple of new vendors as well. Plus, we've started the STEM Fair from scratch, so every center, with the exception of Owl Pellets, will be brand new. We can't get rid of Owl Pellets, that's a favorite of the students. So if you can attend, we'd, as most of you always do, we'd love to have you.
Thank you, it's a wonderful program. You know what's so interesting, too, is, I don't know, other people have children who go to these things, they're so excited. They're really excited to be part of this, and it's a wonderful part of our school year, I believe, putting these all together at the end of the year and doing these. So thank you very much for the invitation. I'm sure most of us are, if not all, will be able to take you up on it.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, let me see. You know why we're doing that? Because, hmm, other reports, oh, this could be another report. Okay, we'll go to other reports. Does anyone have any? Mrs. Burns?
Just a, a quick one. I am just meeting with, Superintendent Delai and I are meeting with Ken Gordon, Representative Ken Gordon, on Friday to discuss Park. As you know, Park is coming, reoccurring, well, reoccurring, just starting to take up, pick up speed again now that the initial testing in districts have been completed for the spring. So I'm very grateful that Superintendent Delai is gonna be there for that sit-down, and hoping that she may also be available to Senator Tarr next week to have the same discussion with that, as well as with the pre-K kindergarten grant that was extremely underfunded by the Senate House. They didn't, they did not go along with the same recommendation that the House had put through, which was, I think, a hundred and eighty-three million?
Eighteen point six million.
A little different than my figure. It was like an eight, one eight. So we're also be advocating towards that, because I know it comes back around to the governor's desk, and there may be some leeway after that. I'm not quite as familiar, but I know there's, there's still an opportunity on the back end, which we're hoping that Representative Gordon and our other legislators could speak to and advocate for us on. And there's also another, if you don't mind me bringing it to attention, is Superintendent Delai actually wrote a very poignant, poignant letter to Senator Tarr with regards to.
Yes, kindergarten.
Oh, wasn't kindergarten?
And as well as safety and supportive schools.
Thank you. Which, which I couldn't quite get, because there, even with our school climate and everything that they've done, and all, all the hard work that they've instituted with creating, getting this going, I know that that comes at a cost. And maybe we can, you know, whether it be budget or as, as we go along, find out what that cost is, because I think it's not just our district, but all districts who are undertaking, undertaking this cost to make sure our staff and students are the safest that we can provide, and that we need to have funding to appropriately be able to, to do so. And so I want to thank you very much on taking the initiative and, and writing directly to Senator Tarr on that. Thank you.
I know, that was excellent, because I couldn't help thinking, what are you doing? I don't know what Senator Tarr was thinking. I don't know, I don't know. I thought he was with us for a while.
You notice me, I, he's, I mean, it's, the budget's been on the Senate floor for the past couple of weeks, and the amendment process, I think, just finished up a week ago, just about a week ago. So I know he's been unavailable, and I've tried reaching out a couple of times, and I've just, perhaps I've just caught the office at the wrong, wrong time of the day, meetings and such, but, but it's, you know, me, squeaky wheel and all of.
I appreciate it. Do we have any other? Okay, I would just like to say, I'll make this another report, that thank you to Amanda for giving us a list of activities. It's overwhelming, the list of activities at the end of the year. It is incredible, they were wonderful, there's not one that isn't top-notch and outstanding. And I really am impressed that our teachers come in over the weekend to present these, or they'll stay on the Friday night. And this is part of, they consider apparently part of their job, but it's certainly not listed as a part of their job. It's what they do because they love our kids and they love being teachers. And I think that we really need to let them know that we think highly of them doing that. The art show, we had, we had, we had something in the art show, and the little person was so excited, she's going, "I'm an artist, I'm an artist," all around the house. And so it's like, we didn't realize that, but it's good to know. We have an artist. But they, they were wonderful. The way it is set up, you came in and then, then you go towards the cafeteria, and it, everyone's so excited because they can find their own art work, they can show everybody. It, it's wonderful. And then just this week, a group of teachers in the sixth grade put together, well, the kids did a project, and it included the math, the, the four main subject areas.
Science, social studies.
Science, social studies, and English. They had to write their own story and things, and they had them all through the cafeteria. And this was just the teachers, which is what we're looking for from the teachers, is that they would be doing more of this interdisciplinary work. And the kids, you wouldn't, they were sixth grade, but, oh my goodness, they were so far above sixth grade. It was, it's excellent, and it makes them feel so excited. We didn't have someone say, "I'm a historian," I have to say, but, but very excited about doing the project. And that's not normal, it's not, that's not normal. It's not normal. I mean, the kids don't always. I mean, the kids don't always get excited, but they get excited the way that we offer it. And I think that's important, too, to let them know that the way they offer it is really excellent. And I know a bunch of us went right from the soccer fields. Thank goodness it went till 3 o'clock, because we got there right after the game. So that was good. And we cannot forget the band concerts and the chorus concerts. Oh my goodness, they were unbelievable. It's like we have professionals here. They were so unbelievable. And I think most, one of the most wonderful things, Ms. Mehdi must just, she must be so, like, sleepless at night right now, because, I don't know if people know this, but she had people from the class of 2012 organize a song, it's not a song, the music, the musical rendition.
Right, they contracted with a composer to compose a piece in her honor.
And so they had, it was in the auditor, it was in the Shriners, and it had the elementary school, the high school, and the middle school band. So people were all, all of the seats were taken here. And all of a sudden, at the end, they told her, "No, no, don't go away." And people from all over in the audience came out, and some of them had had her years ago. The people who were there were, she was absolutely shocked.
Now I feel old, because the oldest one was the class of 1983, which was my class. It was years ago.
Oh my goodness, it was, she was there, you know, Ms. Mehdi, she doesn't, she doesn't, crying, crying, crying. It was fabulous, it was fabulous. What a tribute to a person who's given so much to the Wilmington Public Schools. Oh, everyone asked that, yeah, no, she had no.
Like, oh my god, we're really.
No, she had no idea that was happening. That class wanted to do it, and I think they thought, from what I heard, that it would be done sooner. But trying to get all those people together from different classes was quite a feat. So, nope, she says she's not retiring yet.
She's not allowed.
Not allowed, exactly, exactly. So I don't know if anyone else had any comments on any of those things, but I really think that, thank you to our staff. And we'd appreciate you letting them know that.
Absolutely.
Correspondence?
We have none this evening.
None this evening, okay. Future meeting dates and agenda items, we have two more meetings before the summer solstice. And June 10th, we will be recognizing the people who will be retiring. And June 24th will be after school's out, so we'll be checking on how the ending of school went. That'll be good, okay. All right, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Brasad?
I make the motion for adjournment.
Okay, second, Mrs. Bonish, others in favor? Unanimous, Kim, thank you very much.